Two thousand twenty meeting of the Agricultural Commission to order. Seeing that we're remote, I think we can waive this pledge of allegiance tonight. And first order of business is what we had discussed at the last meeting is to go over the KAVA Agricultural Commission's plan of work. And before we do that, I forgot, is there any new business that needs to be attended to before we get into this? From either Stacy or anyone else? Whether I'm not being heard or there's nothing going on. I guess we could get get on to the first part of the businesses of this evening. And I don't know if everyone has a copy of the KAVA Agricultural Commission Plan, uh, work plan?
Ken, I think I shared with everybody that Carver, Dartmouth, as well as I made. One being like a Dayton template, basically. A bunch of comments in there. I don't know if we want to throw that right up on the screen to share that as we go through it.
I think it would help.
Alright, so Brett is, he just said he's dealing with the YouTube issue with zoning. Um, do you want me to share it?
Yeah, if you could.
Oh, it says host disabled attendee screen sharing. So I guess I can't share it.
Okay. Did you do it on each item, starting with section A or?
Yeah, so if you go, um, everyone has, or you should have it shared with you. If you go to the document. It just is Dayton Agricultural Commission work plan. What I did is I I put the mission from the website in there. I added a ton of comments just on stuff that I thought maybe should be changed. I'm not sure if you know, anyone else added comments to, but I just kind of went through and what's in red is maybe stuff that I was just brainstorming, maybe we could change to. And then I have comments down the side, so I didn't know how you wanted to.
I think if you you want to just kind of verbally go through it a little quickly, if that's possible.
Yeah, sure. So, um, this is the
What I'm doing, this is on my phone at home and my laptop's at the farm.
So I see that Kelly and Leah are on the document already, so that's great. So basically what I did is I took Carver's plan and I kind of just made it our own. Template, I put our, um, Dayton Ag Commission mission at the top and that I just cut and pasted right from the website. So I don't know if I want to kind of go through that and see if there's anything you want to change, but that's directly from the the website. And then under goals, we had goal A, they had develop an inventory of agriculture in Dayton, well, they had in I was suggesting maybe changing the wording up a little bit. And I was trying to play with the wording a little bit, and I just came up with develop a directory or a listing of agricultural producers in Dayton.
Yeah, that I agree with that.
It sounds a little bit better, right? Yeah. Um, and then my only other comment about this section, I mean, obviously, we're gonna have to change all of where we get the data from, but update regularly, I think that we should be a little bit more specific on regularly. What does that mean? Is that yearly?
Why don't, does everyone comfortably comfortable with annually?
I am. So we would obviously have to go through action items one and two and add whatever we want to, but those were just kind of my initial thoughts about. B, um, it was initially educate residents of the community about farming, normal farm practices, living near a farm. Um, I think we should change the wording. This is just what I'm recommending. It doesn't have to be that. Educate residents of Dayton about the benefits of agriculture in the community, farm practices and being a resident of a right to farm community.
So much better.
Yeah, absolutely.
We want to get rid of this here. Okay, so I'll fix that one. And then I didn't do, um, much with the action items, just kind of went through this stuff. Um, I also think that B and C could have been combined. Because C was educate residents of the community about cost of community services and the benefits provided by agriculture.
I, yeah, uh, last time we discussed it, I I thought I had mentioned that, and you're absolutely right. They should be can combined.
Okay, so we're good if we just combine these two. Alright, great. Um, goal D, it had educate school aged children about farming. I think we should be a little bit more specific. Like educate elementary and middle school aged children about agriculture. I think we should change, whatever says farming, I think we should change it to agriculture.
Yes, absolutely.
For E, the, I didn't get too far into it, but it says develop strategies for farmland protection. I would add and preservation.
Technically what APR land, the state calls it was preservation, not protection. Yeah, that's, that's a better terminology.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, F conflict resolution, we're gonna keep. Public relations and community, I'm assuming we're cheap keeping. As a support system, they had growers and farmings, farmers. I think we change it to the agricultural community.
Yes, I like that.
That covers better.
We're like flying through this.
That's one thing about Zoom. I've done all my ordering, which again, getting off subject for a little bit. But I've done all my ordering for next two thousand and twenty-one. Everything's been done on Zoom. And I found I made less mistakes because there's less chance of us getting sidetracked. It's impressible, but hey, you can't have it all.
I I had no idea what they were even saying, provide us suitable incomes for local agriculture to survive. I don't really know how we could provide.
I think what they're trying to say, or their intent was this, that to educate people that live in the town that realize that we, we, you know, it costs the commu- the ag community an immense amount of money to to sustain itself in business. And I think people have the assumption that, well, well, the farmer's got this land, so you know, it's, you know, it's free and this is free and, you know, and it isn't. I think that was the intent of behind this. That we are a business like everyone else, that we have fixed costs, we have, you know, insurances, taxes, yada, yada. We do employ, you know, people in town. I think that's what the intent of that was.
That's as far as I got on it, because I just kind of wanted to focus on the the first few things. I don't know if anyone else has anything else they want to, or they thought strongly of.
I think it'd be great if we want to just kind of keep going and brainstorm the next few letters.
Letter J, the advocate for farming at town hall, state and federal levels. I think a lot of that we're we're already doing in one fit shape, shape or form. And again, I think the the most important thing that I think my personal is is that we, you know, town meeting recommend the warrant articles if we ever decide to do anything. Uh, which I think once this is adapted, I'm not gonna check with Brett, but I'm almost ninety-nine percent sure. Once we finish this document, it'll have to go on the warrant for town meeting.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry, um, we created another YouTube account and there was a glitch, so we're not live tonight, but we are recording it. Chairman Arujio, to your point, um, I spoke to Bill Napolitano about this. And he said it's just a vote of the Agricultural Commission because it's a work plan that guides what we're doing. And so we don't need to go to town meeting. If it's something, I think if you feel that it's something we need to be doing as a town, then maybe we can send it to the Board of Selectmen for maybe a final approval, if you want to do that.
I would feel more comfortable on that, Brett. Because I think it it shows, you know, we're right now on our stage of life, that the more transparency we have, the better. So that would make me feel more comfortable, you know, probably for this document, I don't think it's a big deal, but I think from, once we get this document and then people start giving us more and more specifics or we get more feedback from the taxpayers of the town. When we start to have to put teeth into some of this policy, then we're gonna have to go that other route, correct?
Yes, when we start needing, um, monies outside of the budget for things, then yeah, we may need to put special articles together. But just in terms of what you're speaking about, I do think it's a good idea to get buy-in from the Board of Selectmen, simply because if we are gonna need money down the road in the form of budget funds or special articles, we do want to have that, you know, hand in glove partnership with them. So I think it is a good idea, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Great.
I also think it's a good idea that that in the long run, it would be nice if we could bring it to town meeting. Um, just to get the community, like, like you said, Ken, a little bit more involved and they see that something's happening. This isn't just like, you know, oh yeah, they create an ad commission and nothing, they never hear from us again. I think it would be a good way just to get something else out there.
So for that, instead of, um, the only reason I'm saying no is just be, I I'm not saying no. So first of all, um, I don't, I don't even get a vote.
You're not, you don't have to convince me, Brett.
It doesn't need to be, I'm just saying it doesn't need to be brought to town meeting. Here's what I think, though. If we want to have a presence in the town, I think what we should be doing is doing reports. We should have someone from the ag comm and obviously not me, because I have to, at a town meeting, be the Board of Selectmen. But it should be someone from the ag comm or a couple members who can stand up and give a report. We, we do that, like Open Space Committee does one. Board of Health does one. Um, so maybe that's how we could inform the town as to what what we're doing. We obviously aren't just sitting here talking about the glory days of farming. There's actual work being done, and so I think that's a good chance to highlight the work that's being done by the commission.
I I'm comfortable with that. I think that's, you know, from right now, that's the best, probably the most proper way to handle it after we get the blessing from the selectmen.
I think that would be a great flow.
Section K is you know, unfortunately, unfortunately, however you want to look at it. At times, you know, I think we have to do this and whether it be myself or other board members or I think that's something that's going to be very important to this document. Because when I first started reading this document, I thought it was way too much, but we started working on this two years ago or a year and a half ago. And the way things have changed uh, in our community, that I think the more the more, the the better the document, the better off we're gonna be and kind of endorsing this document right now, more so than I did before. Anyone else has any comments on section K? Section L, I like the 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 intent of this item. I don't like the language. I don't know if anybody else has a problem with the language, us being a clearinghouse.
I I agree. Not, I think being a clearinghouse is a great idea, but not necessarily for everything. I think that becomes a little, a little over too much. It's not a realistic thing.
Do we have any suggestions from any of their members for some proper language for that?
How about the term liaison? I don't know how it would fit in, but instead of serve as a clearinghouse, maybe serve as a liaison for agricultural issues or, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I I go for that because, you know, a clearinghouse for everything agriculture that gets, I think, too messy and too cool, you know? And I agree with Leslie's terminology. I like that much better.
Back to it, too.
Does anybody else have any comments on that? Okay.
Can I ask one question on that, Mr. Chairman? So uh, we're taking out the clearinghouse part, but is the other part staying the same? Because I agree that we should provide some sort of input on different town warrant articles that impact agriculture, but that directly come from this commission.
One and two, I don't have a problem. It was just the, under the letterhead section L there. Everything agriculture. Terminology, it kind of, for me, it clears it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
But as far as the, under the action, no, let's keep that. I think that's, you know, and maybe somewhere down the road, we might even add to that.
Yeah, I like that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Okay, everybody ready to go to section M? Development Resource Advisors, Friends and Care to Know, Specs of Plan and Implementation. At first, I thought this was overkill, but nowadays, I think this is the way we want to be. Oh, we got the template up. Hey. Anybody else have any comments as far as A, B, C, D, E and F?
Just reword the goal a little bit. Even to like create networking opportunities. I don't know, I mean.
The goal for B, Leslie?
For M.
Yeah, I don't, I agree with Leslie. I'm not the biggest fan of the goal, how it's written out.
Yeah, I I agree.
Like, I don't know, I'm just brainstorming, creating networking opportunities or creating, um, implement, I don't know.
Or Leslie, along that line, maybe creating a network of key stakeholders. Something like that, because we want to reach out to folks who will enrich, you know, what our goals are in terms of agriculture and education in town.
That was good, Brett.
So creating a network of key stakeholders.
And then I, so I didn't have the end of the sentence finished. I apologize. That's only the beginning, but what, but what we should convey is that in in line with developing resources, that this network will be a resource to help us implement this plan.
I like that.
But I'm not sure, you know, I don't know of all the phrasing, so I apologize.
Yeah, we can let that go for now, maybe. No, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what if even after, so creating a network of keys, um, I'm sorry, creating a network of key stakeholders? And then we just want to add the the aspects, um, to engage in the aspects of the work plan implementation. I just think that, yeah, the advisors and friends part, I think that that has to go. But we can take the engage in the aspect of work plan implementation and and
I like that.
Because the rest of, the rest of that part was good. It was just like the first half, like advisors and friends, I thought was a little weird.
No, I like what's on the screen right now. I kind of yes, much better, much better. Yeah, that makes it much cleaner.
Yeah, do we even need N?
No, we definitely don't need N. If if folks think we well, let me ask this, does anyone think that the law needs any tweaks or anything? The actual right to farm by law?
No, I I don't think so.
Yeah, so if we're comfortable with it, then I don't think N is, um, I think we checked that box technically.
Okay, section O. Survey, survey and inventory farmers, issues, needs, priorities. I I understand the intent of this. I think it, um, it's good. I think it should be not really happy with some of that language, survey and inventory farmers.
Mr. Chairman, what part of that do you like? Because I almost like the draft questionnaire for Dayton farmers. Like, we do something like that.
Yeah, that I like. And you give the feedback back to the center of distribute to the farmers. I like that. Everything on that I like. It's just the wording at the very beginning, survey or inventory farmers needs. You know, issues, needs, priorities, what have you. I I think that needs to be cleaned up a little bit.
Should we, um, how how would we phrase this? Create a feedback repository from Dayton farmers? I I don't know what the correct wording is. What I'm trying to say is, uh, create an information bank.
That's what I'm trying to, yes.
What we figure out from them.
Exactly.
How would I put it? Create a
Create an informational bank based on issues, needs and priorities as reported by the farmers?
Or just of Dayton farmers?
Yes.
I love it.
Yes.
That's much clearer. Yeah, the the very clear here from the Carver one.
Can we do farmers slash producers? I think, um, from, you know, a lot of people don't like the word farmers, they like the word producers.
Yeah, you've you've done some USDA reports, haven't you, Leslie?
I have, I have. And I've run a lot of conferences about agriculture. I hear it all the time. Alright, we're gonna get rid of that. I'll clean this up a little bit more, just to get everyone's ideas on. I'm just trying to type as fast as I can.
What if you even got rid of farmers and replaced it with agricultural? So priorities of Dayton's agricultural producers. Does that make sense?
I don't think we want to scare the old people.
We don't want to scare the young people either. I don't know.
Producers, I don't know. What do we think?
Some might not know what agriculture is. Thanks, John.
I'm only wondering, um, will this, does it come off in a way that we're excluding folks that aren't producing a product?
Yeah, that's why I think if you leave farmers, farmers and producers, then you got your bases covered. Because you can consider yourself a farmer, a part-time, you know, family farm type thing where you're doing horses or whatever. It's not for for income, but you are in the agricultural community, so I I think we will offend people if we don't put that in.
Do you want to keep with Dayton agricultural farmers slash producers or kick out the word agricultural?
Kick the agricultural out and just use farmers and promotes and produces. Yeah, I think it's a little redundant keeping that in there. That's just my opinion. It's a lot cleaner. I like it. What everybody else feels about it? Figure out how to use the mute. Okay, so everybody happy with that?
Looks good to me.
I'm pretty, I'm happy with it. And the last one, which is the one I think is the grant writing. This is something we're gonna need help from, from a lot of, you know, even even Brett can help us to find out what the towns needs. As far as APR land, we, you know, the land of Council Oak, that the town now owns, that's used for farming, different things of that, where maybe we have other properties in the town that could be used, and if we can find someone to help us get some grants to help the town to develop these ideas. I don't know if there's more, we got A, B, C, D, E and F, if there's more things that we need to do. Add to that list, or should things be taken out of this list? I don't know. These are just thoughts that have been going through my head for the past week.
The only thing I think we may not need from this list is just the website. Simply because it, uh, we can always boost up our presence on the regular town website. We do have a page for our commission. But I like everything else on this.
Oh, yeah, I do, too. It's just that I you know, right now, Steve, I don't think really could help us much because with all the COVID restrictions. Education projects, we're, you know, there's a lot of things right now, but I don't know. We really can't do.
So, totally, yeah, they're just, by the nature of the pandemic, yes, we can't like go into the schools, obviously. I think we should keep a lot of these things here, because even though right now, we may be relegated to just kind of doing videos. And maybe a questionnaire. We still in the future, next year, you know, Fingers crossed, things may get better and we may be able to, once the vaccine is readily available, go into the schools again. It, it probably won't be the same, but, um, you know, we should plan for that too, just in case.
No, educational projects are still very important. You know, that's near and did. Am I hot? So that's just me.
But, but for now, we may just, um, Mr. Chairman, have to do some of those educational components. I'm just talking about like short term. Those may be, need to be done like videos. We may have to have, you know, the cable television committee. Assist us or I can help. Um, but that, that may be the only thing we're able to do for the next couple of months, but.
The only thing I would add in this grant writing thing, um, and I think we need a section on a work plan for it, would be the community garden.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yes.
Maybe that could be the new N.
True. And do we want to put that here under grants as well?
I'm just trying to think. I try, I think I looked into seeing if we were eligible for anything. But it ended up not being so because of, um, there was one program I looked into, but we just weren't eligible. I forget what, why, but, um. We just didn't qualify. I reached out to the program director and everything.
Okay. So do you want to put something on N for the? Community garden?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a goal. I know we're not, we're not, um. Doing the daily work per se, but, um, it's definitely something that. Wouldn't have happened without us, that's for sure. So. Um, I think it's something that we should put and that's something that we should be talking about when we write an annual report or talk at a town meeting to. You know, residents. So, yeah, definitely.
How do we want to word it? Establish or?
Establish, uh, like establish a community garden that can. Meet the needs. Or just serve the neediest families in Dayton, maybe? I don't know how we'll phrase it, but that, that's what I was thinking.
Oversee?
Oversea a community garden?
Or is that, is that putting us too much in charge?
How about establish and oversee? Cause we haven't really established it yet, right? I mean, we haven't.
No, it hasn't. Cause that house, whoever bought that house, you guys, I forgot to tell you this. They, we think they're backing out and so we may have to raise it, unfortunately. I know. So that's why nothing's been done over there. Sorry, I meant to tie that all together.
Yeah, cause it was supposed to be done, what, starting by the first of November.
Correct. Exactly. So I just reached out to the building commission. I said, why, I just realized that house is still there. He explained why.
Can't they put that out again for bid? Or is it cost too much?
So this, this would be like the third time in two months that we put it out. So I don't think at this point anyone wants it. But we did try our best, like we had one buyer once and then, um. The advertisement was wrong, so we put it back out. And then a person bought it for a couple hundred dollars. And then this is the individual now that we don't think is going to end up moving it.
Now help me with wording here. Establish and oversee a community garden that can help to support. Should we do like Dayton community food pantry?
I don't know. That's an awful lot of stuff to put in like the header. I don't know if you just want to put establish and oversee a community garden. And then like number one, um, not proceed, pro, produce, produce.
That can, yeah, I know.
That's a lot. Produce will go to the food pantry. Just so like, we're already allocating where that stuff's going. You know, another, another thing we could have in there was like. To educate youth on growing using the Eden method. Um, cause that was how they're going to do that. I think we should include that in there, maybe. And then maybe even also put in there, um, contacting. The, the Boy Scouts, just so they're also, we should add in there in our work plan, like that they're kind of like. Holding this project where we're more of overseeing. Is just how I feel.
All right. Contact, all right, contact local scout troops. My computer is glitching on me. I mean, we can come back to action items too.
Yes.
But at least we have all of our goals figured out. That's, that's positive.
And the other thing, Leslie, did you? Do anything on the mission statement?
I just cut and pasted the mission statement over here from the website. I didn't want to change anything without everybody talking about it. The only thing, did I change anything? I think there might've been some formatting that I changed, but I think I just cut and pasted it.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to talk about that next. Do we want to keep that, change it?
Um, I think, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think that's something. I think that seeing that we got so much done on this, if we could, this is where we might get bogged down. Maybe we, you know, if everybody's in agreement, so we can kind of go over it tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think everything other than the last sentence is pretty good. For a work plan, I would just delete the, the last sentence. That's all.
Let's see.
Yeah, I don't think it belongs there. Like it, it sounds really nice. Then you get there and it feels like you're going into like a paper. Agriculture is defined as farming. Like I, I, I don't.
It's very, yeah, it's very out of place. Um. And that's almost like what you would put in a bylaw to like legally define whatever you were going to use the term to mean. I love it. I love it just like that.
Me too.
Well, I've done, wow.
Do we want to start on action items?
That's up to everybody. I mean. I'm willing to go a little bit longer. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Yeah, I think we've made a lot of progress. So if we want to go another, you know. Few minutes, 20 minutes, I'm fine with that. I have no issue.
All right, um. Yeah, I kind of like the way you did it, Leslie. It's, yeah, I like that. Okay, on the mission statement. Okay, now we go to actions. Research data available on section A, contact. Now, we've been waiting for Dartmouth. I think if we eliminate Dartmouth and just, you know, assessors office, the serpent. The new census that's coming out. M D A R. And Farm Bureau. And I don't know if we should do anything from F S A or not, Leslie. What do you think?
Um, the stuff that I was thinking of is, um, C map and I put a couple of things down below. C map, mass grown listings. They have.
Right.
You know, farm stuff. I would say probably F S A, yes, they would have some. Information for us, especially with all the, the grants that just came out. Um, we have.
That's why I was thinking of that.
Yeah, a lot of your smaller farms who probably go unrecognized, uh, most likely applied for some of those grants. And we could, we could really get their information from the F S, F S A.
Okay.
So we want to do Farm Bureau, F S A, C map.
Right, right. I mean, serpent is okay. But yeah. I agree with the Leslie suggestions. Uh, anybody else have any comment?
I guess my only question, Mr. Chairman, is what? What data will Serpent give us pursuant to agriculture? Do they have maps or anything like that?
They, what they do and, you know, it's, it's a free service. Well, you know, it's a free service to the towns. For planning. Some of their information is good, some of it's outdated. But they do have overviews on different types of soils and different types of large process of land that. They determine what they feel is, you know. What is the best use of that land for the town? So, you know, I, I, you know, if not keeping them in it, I think is just doing it out of courtesy. I mean, the plan, when I was, I'm, I'm, I just put my planning board hat back on. And that's what we use them for is when we were trying to do our master plan, they gave us some. Information and helped us in some directions. That's, you know, it, it's a tool that we can use.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, section B, collect and synthesize data on. Land and agricultural land, blah, 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 blah. Most of it I like. There's one they did, you know, it's a typo mistake as far as. Well, it's chapter 61 is, you know, that's also for forestry, but if pertaining to agriculture, it'd have to be. I, I think it should just be clean. List all the chapter 61s in their proper names. I'm just doing this as. Proper etiquette, I guess, is the word I'm trying to use. I don't know. You get 61, 61A, 61B.
So just list 61, 61A, 61B.
Right.
And then like, like, um, do you mean, Mr. Chairman, like 61B forestry, 61A agriculture, like that?
Yes.
Keep the work, land use here?
No, he, I think he's saying be more specific.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
So we can delete land use, Leslie, and then put 61B and then add forest three. And then 61A, I believe is agricultural.
Correct.
Aquaculture.
What's that, John?
Is, is that aquaculture, 61A?
Yes.
Aquaculture, water?
Oh no, agriculture. I'm sorry. It's my accent.
Not aquaculture, which is all covered in the, you know.
What about the next sentence, economic impact? Keep that or?
What do they mean by that? I didn't gather what this is supposed to.
What it, I, it's poorly, it's, I don't know, it was a scare tactic or whatever. I take it, I took it as an offensive comment. I mean, I think what, what the, what the intent was behind this is, I, I'm grasping for words, but it's what the impact we have on the community where, you know. An operating farm or garden center or dairy farm. You know, the, what we do for, you know, what the cost of op, operation is for the town, which is minimal. Uh, the amount of people that we employ, uh, the benefits it is to the community, I think is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, that's, I didn't get that from that though.
Yeah.
I, it almost makes it sound like when you. And I don't think they're saying this, but it makes it look like when you put your land into chapter, then the economic impact is. Cost of community services, jobs and multiplier effect. So for me, it didn't make any sense why those things were near each other. That's all.
Yeah, it, it, you know, you know, if you're really looking to 61A, it's, it's, you're, you're charged with the commercial tax rate.
Yeah.
But it's at a reduced value. So it's, it, the intent of the law is where the town and the farmer or the landowner. Both benefit because the town doesn't take a beating.
Yeah.
Because if you're like a, a senior person and you're all right, you got X amount of acres and, uh. All right, you got a thousand feet of frontage on Center Street. All right, they can tax you for five house lots.
Yeah.
But what they'll do is on the backland, the town, when the assessors will give you a break on that backland. If you would put it in 61A, 61B or what have you. Well, they, they reduce the frontage, but they increase the value of the backland. So the town actually comes out maybe a little less, but it keeps that land open. So, because it's not requiring a lot of services from the town.
Exactly.
That was the intent of the law. So, you know. Yeah, we still, you know, we still help the school department. We still help, you know, whatever the, the finances of the town.
So does, are we keeping that statement or, cause I really liked the benefits part, but I don't. I'm not sure I'm keen with this economic im, impact.
That's what I'm not happy with either.
But I like the benefits part.
Right.
So get rid of this whole sentence here?
In the economic.
What was that?
In the economic and if they, if in the future, we need to put something back in there, we can always put it back in. But this time it doesn't seem to be as important as probably the benefits.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think we can.
Sorry, my. My computer is, um, going in and out. Did you say delete the entire economic impact, cost of community services, jobs, multiplier effect?
If everyone agrees.
Yeah, for now, I'm not happy with that.
Yeah, I would prefer out.
Okay, perfect. It's out.
Looks good.
And I think where it says benefits, open space, environment, historic, cultural and. Employment.
Absolutely. Jobs.
Jobs, jobs, just that would.
I love it.
And next one, two is develop a working map and database of agriculture in Dayton.
I like that. Actually, I saw earlier tonight, um, Westport has a nice map. That has all of their farms kind of like, you know, pinned on it. Um, that would be something that's really neat to do for Dayton.
I love that. That would be really cool because we do have maps of, um. When I've reached out to the assessing department, they've made maps, for example, delineating all the open space that the town owns. Um, so I really think we could work with them and get a working map of all agricultural land in town.
Okay. Yeah, I, I go with that. I agree with that. Okay. And then we already discussed the update where I said regularly, we would do it annually. Okay. Now the section B. Uh, develop educational material, materials, utilize inventory data, back sheet flyer, living near a farm.
Can we back up A for a moment?
Yep.
Eliminate that C map and mass grown at the bottom.
Sorry. Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
Can we get rid of utilize inventory data? I think that's kind of self-explanatory.
Yes.
And then one thing that I would, instead of living near a farm, I would do something like living in a right to farm community. Because I feel like no matter if you live in a farm or around a farm.
Yes, I agree. I agree with that 100%.
And then instead of doing normal farming practices, what about just getting rid of the word normal? Just because I feel like when you say normal, is there normal and? Just because I feel like when you say normal, is there normal and abnormal? I don't know.
What do you consider normal? I say get rid of it.
Yeah. And are we gonna do a farming one-on-one? Video?
I mean, that would be great, but I think that's something we would have to get a grant for.
Yeah. How about even just a farming one-on-one flyer?
Right.
So we could totally do a farming one-on-one video, but we don't have capacity, like cable could film that for us and play it on channel nine. We definitely obviously don't have capacity to do like a whole program. But we could film like a short little video that gets replayed on there. That's possible.
You know, and i- if, I don't know if the, the cable commission has the ability to put subtitles in there. If you just did a video saying that this is what it does for Dayton, you know, you know, protects, you know, the basics, open space, it creates jobs, you know.
Yeah, they can absolutely do that. They can make it look pretty good, too. Maybe not a whole program, but a fi- they can make a five-minute video look, um.
I think if you win more than five minutes right now, you, you'd start to lose people. But I mean, if they watch a five-minute quick clip, this is what's going on.
Yeah.
This is the benefits.
Yeah. Like a little, it, like, almost like a commercial?
Basically, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like with an elevator pitch. I absolutely agree with you a hundred percent.
So what do we want to call it? Or do we want to move?
Like, it's really just a video clip, Leslie.
Farming for dummies.
A video?
It's almost like a, what you would call like a promo clip. Like, the short little tease, but it's more informational than selling anything, obviously.
That you want to sell information.
There you go. I like it. And get people interested.
Of agriculture, of farming, of Dayton agriculture, would we?
It could even be, what do you think, Ken? I'm thinking it could be informational. Like, just, did you know Dayton's a right-to-farm community? Do you know what farming is? I don't know. What does everyone think?
You're heading down the right track in my, my mind.
We can just leave it as farming one-on-one.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And then just tie it into us and, you know, that we have an agricultural commission. I'm sure there's people that don't even know that, unfortunately, so.
You know, we could, you know, put the blur bin for the, uh, community garden. This is what, you know, what we're supporting, yada, yada, yada. Keep it short and simple.
Really cool. Once we start getting a list compiled of different farms, and I think, you know, going back to, we talked about this before, social media and actually having like an ag comm, Facebook or Instagram or something like that, and interviewing, or even putting clips on of local Dayton farmers, producers, and what they do. It acts as an advertisement for them, but also acts as, you know, um, advertisement for our town as well.
I love that.
Even like having, you know, producer of the week, or, I don't know, farmer of the week.
You know, you know, this is a little off subject, but we, you know, our farm, we reclaimed, we had, we had purchased the Sanson farm four years ago. And there was a four, a, a, four and a half acre piece that was, that was mined for gravel and it's just been sitting there. So we did a process of reclaiming it. You know, we put in a lot of compost and over the years, we've been working on it. We finally finished the project. And what we did was we took some pictures of it as the progress was going on and put it on Facebook. And, uh, the response from what people, well, well, you know, because everybody in the subdivision thought there was more houses going in. So we put a thing on Facebook and showed what we were doing and the response of it's been phenomenal. I was, you know, we, we're taking this piece of land that was pretty much destroyed forty years ago, we're bringing it back into viability.
That's awesome. So people were happy in the, in the area?
The response was phenomenal, Brett. I was, I was impressed, you know, from townspeople.
Very nice. Finally, good news. Twenty twenty brought good news.
But yeah, this, this plays into, you know, I mean, that's just one instance. And I mean, if every once in a while, we did a little bit blurb of something that somebody's doing.
Absolutely. We could do like a spotlight, producer of the week, like Leslie was saying, or just like, you know, a, a good deed that gets done that's related to agriculture, anything.
With that being said, we should add something in here about social media.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I totally agree. I like that we're putting it under education, by the way. I think it's.
What do we want to see? Develop social media presence about?
Yeah. Develop and grow social media presence. And maybe, maybe this will be a good point to state, you know, that it's going to be used primarily to promote different producers and agriculturalists in town, um, and also be used to really educate people, like, did you know we had an agricultural commission? Did you know this is what we're doing? Did you know that we're trying to, um, establish and oversee a community garden? Just different things like that. I think we always assume, and, and I'm guilty of this as well, that people just follow along. They're not. I mean, people are dealing with a lot right now. Um, so I think this will be a good tool.
It's a good tool, and then anything that's positive. I don't know how it is on your, your N, Brett, but anything positive, anything that's good right now, it, you know, it seems to help people emotionally.
Oh, my God, so much. People need good news right now.
Do we want to be specific about, um, what kind of social media? Or just leave it as?
Yeah, because, I mean, I don't know, there's so many, you know, you've got Facebook, you've got Twitter, you've got, you know.
And who knows what'll change? Like, next week, there'll be a whole new.
Yeah, we'll all be using like Twitch or whatever that thing is.
Yeah. As long as it doesn't go on TikTok.
I still don't even know what that is.
It's the new one, Poller, Poller.
Yeah, what is that? I can't keep up. I still primarily use Facebook, you guys. I can barely remember to do Twitter.
Yeah, I, you know, what I do is Facebook, that's what, you know. Personally, it is our business, that's all the social media that we use. The only thing we do is that from time to time, we do go onto Pinterest for ideas.
Absolutely. Good for crafts and recipes.
John does quite a bit of Pinterest, don't you, John?
Oh, you've been active, Mr. Buffington? What people, what are you cooking, John?
He does a lot of wreaths. He creates wreaths. Okay. And as far as the rest of it, distribute materials, provide education. I don't know if there's anything we want to, I mean, we already do legis-, I do legislators. Someday, we will do distribute materials at community events.
Yeah, when we can have them again, right?
Yeah. Um, I think we already, section B, we already kind of, that's kind of like we double dipped there, didn't we? On section one and then, and C, which we kind of come up with an idea.
Some of it is a little, a little not redundant, but like, they, they were pasting, basically saying the same thing in a different way. So I did notice that, too.
Yeah. Do we really need that? Section B. Action number two.
Because isn't this, isn't develop a brochure also down here somewhere, too? We would literally, yeah, right here.
So just get rid of all of this?
Well, actually, let's.
I don't.
This section is more applying for grants to fund the brochure. Um, but to the chairman's point, maybe we, yeah, this is kind of the first time they mention it.
How about just putting up in, um, action one, develop educational materials, and we can say, and brochure? Because I feel like it's out of place down here.
Right.
Where is that, Leslie?
Um, action item one under B, develop educational materials, and we can say, and brochures.
Yeah, I think that goes great because that's what we're talking about, having a fact sheet, a flyer in that video. So the, a brochure is kind of a flyer, like very similar. So I, I think that'd go great there.
I love that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then collect information. We have that as goal one, right? Do we need it down here?
I don't think so. I mean, it's really covered in one B, no?
Yes, yeah, I agree.
So goal A, one B, action one B. I think we're doing a good job of tidying this up.
I don't even know if we need this, this distribute materials at community event, events, because number two is distribute materials.
I agree.
Maybe, maybe we can add, um, under distribute materials, a point about community events. Provide, like, like, uh, distribute at community events. You could just put that.
It's right here on B.
Oh, it's already there. Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Town website is already there, too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay.
Hold on, B, ed- education, educating, right? Educating residents?
Yep. Yes, yep.
Okay.
Good catch.
All right.
That was a lot of work that got done.
Yes.
When under D, we definitely wanted to go with educate elementary and middle school age children, right? And get rid of.
Totally.
Right here? Yeah.
And I'll change that to mark is done. So a couple of things that I was thinking of for action items for goal D was to, um, we have a bunch of different connecting, connecting, connect to mass farm to schools, and then maybe doing something with FFA. We could probably get rid of bog slash, like all of their, um, cranberry bog stuff, we could probably get rid of, contact Mike Paddock, I don't know who he is. I'm not sure if ag in the classroom is still a thing anymore. We would have to look that up.
Right.
Do we want to keep the developed format farming one-on-one video in this section? I think that there are some pretty good farming one-on-one videos out there. I don't necessarily think we have to recreate the wheel on some of this stuff. So maybe even just to be the liaison between, the school and the educational community, um, agricultural community. Um, I don't necessarily know if we, we need to be developing and formatting stuff that's already currently out there, if that makes sense.
I, I agree with Les, with you, Leslie, on that. You're absolutely right.
So maybe we could do something like act as a liaison between. And what is everyone? Dayton schools and the ag community. And then just get rid of the farming one-on-one.
Right.
Um, the other thing that I had, provide opportunities, we're not really providing the opportunities. Maybe we can change that wording. Encourage local farms to provide opportunities, or I don't know.
Yes. Yes.
Just remove the provide.
Say like encourage opportunities. For youth to work on farms?
Yes.
Facilitate.
How about for youth agricultural employment?
Yeah, agricultural employment would be better than farm.
Yeah. We have, we have more than just farms in town, you know?
What about also, instead of just employment, but for like community service? Because I know there are people who are looking like to fill community service, like not like but just looking to do some community service. I'm not sure if that's something also that could be brought into here, um.
I love that idea, yeah.
I would fall in there.
Yeah.
Yes, it would.
Seed germination need do in there?
I feel like schools do that.
Yeah.
On their own. I don't necessarily think it does need to be in there.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, I think that, Ken, doesn't the, um, don't they, they have a greenhouse they just built? So I'm pretty sure they're doing all that.
Yeah, they're already doing that at the, um, elementary.
Hopefully, the elementary school and the community garden can get together and with their seeds starting, like air, it'll come out, you know?
Oh, that would be good.
Yeah, we, um, when the house is gone, I will contact, um, I think it's the Go Green Club. And I also am in touch with the assistant vice principal who helped get the greenhouse going. So we'll definitely contact them. When thing, when things are ready.
And Brett, I also, um, the, one of the women who's in charge of the Go Green Club, I see her on a regular basis, too, so I can help with that communication.
Yes, I would love that. Thank you. I was told to, uh, contact her, so I was just waiting until the time was right and things were actually going to start happening before I reached out to her.
Her dog comes to our daycare, so I usually see her a few days a week. Do we want to change anything under action three?
I don't think so.
How about revitalizing four H and? How about revitalizing 4H in Dayton?
That's a big nut to swing, John.
I understand that, too. Either that or delete it.
Yeah.
It's important, and I think that even just having information for people coming into town, even if it's not 4H in Dayton, if we have information for other clubs.
Right.
Do we currently know if we have any? Or what's existing for 4H clubs in Dayton?
No, but we can get that information.
I don't think at this time there are any in Dayton.
Okay.
Was there ever at a time?
Oh, God, yes.
Yes.
How long ago?
Oh, 1940, no.
My wife and I will lead as well into, we, when our daughter finally went to college, that's when we, we did it about two years after, and I think we stopped in 98 or 99.
Okay.
I stopped in 82.
That was second generation. My parents did it. We took over the club in Dayton. I mean, there's other people that came in as associate, you know, assistant leaders, but we, you know, did it from, my parents started in the early 60s until almost 2000, so about 40 years.
We just had one that was, been for a bit a while in Dayton also.
Right. There was about, there was like three or four clubs back in the day in Dayton.
Do you want to put anything else under these action items? I kind of would like to put up here, connect with mass farm to school. We could always include FFA in some of our education to some of the younger kids, too. They're always looking for, um, projects to do for community service.
I agree with that. I don't have a problem with that. I think that's important.
Well, the two local tapas are, are still in Norfolk, right?
Yes. Yeah. And I happen to be the FFA advisor, so we can connect with them very, very quickly.
Very easily.
Very easily.
They're always looking for projects, so.
Okay. So. Ready to call it an evening, or we still want to keep going?
I think we've done a lot. I think, um, we've done a good amount, and I think the last half are probably going to be some of our harder ones, so maybe we need to kind of like, let's.
We're gonna get bogged, bogged down on section F.
Yeah.
I really don't think we want to tackle that one tonight.
No.
Look, just a point about F, we did pass that, um, we do have a template that we can use for this, uh, from work that we had done before. So that's good news about that one.
Right, that's gonna help.
Absolutely. But I think this was good work. I mean, we literally did what I thought would be like a month's work in, in evening.
Very good.
And I like this, um, just a comment, I do really like the Google Doc, like how everything, we can do it literally in real time. I think that's really beneficial as well. So, uh, thank you, Leslie.
Yes. It's nice to see you.
Yeah, and if we can take a look, and even if you, y'all can add comments on it and everything, in between meetings, and then we can kind of refresh ourselves with some of our ideas.
Absolutely, and I think, Leslie, um, correct me if I'm wrong, when someone writes a comment or suggests a change, perhaps we can discuss it, because there should be a little bubble on the right-hand corner, and then if the commission agrees, we can just click that check mark. Yeah, that might be a good way to start the conversation on these different items for our, our next meeting.
Yeah, you saw all my comments on the side, you know, and those were just thoughts, yeah, so we could certainly. Yeah, if you want to take a look at it in between the meetings and just throw some comments up and.
I like it. And then that way, we're not starting from like scratch, we're just discussing very specific. I like it.
Okay, very good.
Good work, everybody.
Okay, um, do we want to meet in December?
So let me check the calendar and give you what the date would be, and then we can make that decision. It would be the 22nd, I believe, which is very close to.
No, that wouldn't work.
No.
So do you want to meet before? Or do you just want to resume in January? And I'm okay with any, either.
I'm fine.
Does that work?
What's that?
That, Leslie, you broke up.
Um, that, if we, if we did it a little sooner, either the 8th or the 15th, does either of those work for people?
The 15th works for me.
15th is okay, the 8th, no. The 15th would work for me.
Can do the 15th.
Perfect.
15th?
Yep.
Write it down on the schedule.
We will, just so everyone knows, I, I would plan for us to be remote. We may have good news and things turn around, and we can have it at Old Town Hall, but let's plan for remote for now.
Very good. So that entail, um, does anyone want to entertain a motion?
I'm moved.
To adjourn, right?
Yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
See you December 15th. Have a great evening.
Good work, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Good night.